Welcome to the December 19, 2016 Troy City Council Meeting. Before we start this evening, I'd like to make a few announcements. We have some technical difficulties with our camera system and recording devices this evening, so there will only be one camera recording. There won't be any graphics on the screen if you happen to be watching at home. Also, we will tape, and it will be available on YouTube for future dates. So bear with us this evening, and we'll get started. So this evening, we are pleased to have Councilman Henderson lead us with the invocation, so if you please would stand for that, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day that we have before us. We thank you for this Christmas season as we head into it, and we just ask for your blessings on this meeting and the rest of the week. I pray that you will be with us, help us with the weather, bless our police officers and fire department as they proceed with their jobs and keeping us safe. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. The City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember McCown?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present, I did fail to mention that there will be no live stream this evening. Of course, if you were looking for that, you probably know that. Our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. C1 is a certificate of recognition to be presented for Citizen Code Enforcement volunteer Nancy Chapman, and I see that Paul Evans, zoning and compliance specialist, is at the podium for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Slater. It's good to be with you, members of council. Thanks for having me here. As we know, Troy has hundreds and maybe even thousands of volunteers working in and out every day to make our community better. And within City Hall, I manage a program called the Volunteer Code Enforcement Program. Our resident, Troy resident Nancy Chapman, has recently stepped down after over two years of volunteering on a monthly basis to help make this community better. Nancy's here tonight for this very special presentation. A little background on what that program does. Essentially, on Saturday mornings, we have trained citizens that in pairs go out in a city car, and they remove these unsightly signs that are placed adjacent to our roadways. This program has been going on for about, well, since October 2011. It's been very successful. For what Nancy has done, and every Saturday that she goes out, she actually pairs up with her husband Bruce, who is also a volunteer. They make properties that look like this, and by the time they get done with them, they look like this. And it's a really immediate way to give back to the community. So with that being said, Nancy, you're here tonight. I'd like to invite you up. Mayor Slater's gonna provide a very special certificate of recognition for your service. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Sure.
We only have one camera this evening, and so we're here a second.
Oh, goodie.
Nancy, it's an honor and a privilege for me to be here this evening to present this certificate of recognition on behalf of the City Council, the city residents and businesses of Troy. When I read this before this evening, I want to see if I can keep you on, because you did such a great job for the city, so maybe I can get you to agree to stay on.
Well, I'm indebted to a lot of volunteer organizations, especially to that man back there. I do a lot of volunteering for him, and I'm just kind of spreading myself thin, but at least I didn't leave Paul in the lurch. I came up with a substitute for me, so I did not dump a crisis in his lap. I came up with someone to replace me, but...
Okay.
So hopefully, he will do as good a job. I'll keep on him.
Well, okay. I'll accept that. But Nancy, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to present to you a certificate of recognition. And if I could, I'd like to read this into the record, because I think it indicates what a great job you've done for the city.
Thank you.
So this is awarded to Nancy Chapman in recognition for your dedication to the city of Troy as a Citizen Code Enforcement volunteer. From June 2013 through November 2016, you volunteered as the eyes and ears of our community. Your assignment was spending weekend hours touring the city and removing temporary signs placed in the city's right-of-way. Thanks to your hard work and dedication, you removed hundreds of illegal signs at least once a month, more than any other volunteer in the program, which has helped to beautify the Troy's landscape. The city of Troy extends sincere appreciation to you. Nancy, you are an inspiration to the Troy community, embracing volunteerism, which contributes to making our community a wonderful place to live, work, learn, and play. You have truly made a difference and are a credit to the city of Troy. This is signed by myself, and I'd like to make this presentation. It's December 19, 2016, and I want to thank you for all you've done to volunteer for our city and make it better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure. I just want to say... I just want to thank my husband, because I dragged him... He actually dragged me along to begin. He says, "Come on, let's just do this with me," because he's been doing it longer. And I'm proud to say, one Saturday, we picked up 180 signs. That means we got out of the car 360 times. So just figure that out. But we were happy to do it, and Bruce will continue to do it with our friend David Schwartz. And I'll still be in the community, working for Chief Mayor, so...
Well, great. Thanks again, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did Ethan get those signs back?
Yeah, I was gonna say. I have my campaign signs back, please.
In Troy, we recycle. We pull them apart, the metal, we recycle the metal, right?
Nice.
And some people are fortunate enough to get their signs back, others aren't. So do it every time.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm good with my sign. I know the rules, just in case.
Thanks again, Nancy, for your service. I noticed there's quite a few volunteers that came in this evening to support you and recognize you, so thanks to all the volunteers that are here tonight also. Without the volunteers, we wouldn't be what we are today, so thank you so much. Next on the agenda is C2, Economic Development Report, with the presentation by Glenn Laypen, our economic development specialist. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor, and councilmembers. I would like to provide you with an update on economic development activity here in the city. Now, at first, I'd like to thank Community Affairs' next assistant, Taylor Schrader, for assistance on this presentation. Office vacancy rates here in the city continue to decline. We are currently at 17% in the city through the third quarter of 2016. That compares to a five-year average of about 22.7% on the vacancies. That is without the Kmart property, which is obsolete, functionally obsolete, and also not on the markets. We deduct that out of the numbers. As you can see from the chart, there's been a steady decline. We were at about 30% vacancies on the office side in 2011, and that dropped down to the 17% at the end of the third quarter in 2016. About 367,000 square feet of office space was absorbed through the third quarter of 2016, and that's in comparison to about 83,000 a year ago. So significant difference, and I'll get into some of the factors that went into impacting those numbers in a bit. When the vacancy rates decline, rents tend to go up, so the gross rent per square foot on the average is about $19.05 presently. That compares to the five-year average of $18.40. On Class A space, the asking rent's about $24.31. Class A space includes Columbia Center, other full-service properties like PNC Tower throughout the city. On the industrial side, vacancy rates are very low, about 2.7%. That compares to the five-year average of about 6.1%. If you look at the chart up there, 15% in 2011, down to the present-day 2.7%, so a steady decline on the industrial side. We're pretty full on industrial space. It's very difficult for brokers to try and find space that are available for their clients, and we're seeing a little more renovations of properties as well, so we start to see more improvements on that. Gross rents per square foot, about $6.91, compares again to the five-year average of about $5.54. Where's all this coming from? So we're seeing significant high-paying wage growth here in the city. A lot of that is coming from foreign-owned companies in a variety of sectors, sectors such as R&amp;D, which is research and development, engineering and IT. That accounts for a lot of the high wages, sometimes an average of around $80,000 a year, which is significant for these companies. We continue to be, as a region, the automotive capital of the world, and that is known worldwide still, which attracts companies and encourages companies to grow here because of our central location for the automotive suppliers. On the healthcare side, we're seeing significant growth as well, and also on the financial services side. A lot of this could be coming from the mergers that are occurring in those two industries, and that has kind of a dual-edged sword in some ways, because consolidation can also mean that they may seek to lower their occupancy and footprint in the locations that they're We currently have about 200 foreign-owned companies here in Troy, and I think it sums it up very well. Rick Haas, President and COO of Mahindra, actually, during the video that we did conjunction with the Troy Chamber of Commerce on economic development, he basically said that we looked all over the world, and what you have here in terms of the automotive infrastructure here in Troy is really second to none. That's why Mahindra chose to locate their technical center here and not anywhere else. Other companies see that, and they follow. So recent foreign company investment here in the city comes from Gestamp. Gestamp is a Spanish-owned company, instructional stampings and assemblies manufacturer. They just received a state incentive to grow their current facility here. They currently have about 218 employees on Troy Center Drive. They'll be expanding that and adding about 60 new jobs to that site. Macavision, over on Research Drive, is a German-owned CGI company. They actually did the CGI work for Game of Thrones. They have 160 employees at that site. Also on Research Drive, Karma Automotive, many were at the inauguration of that and the ribbon cutting for that. Chinese-owned luxury automotive manufacturer, used to be Fisker Automotive, 150 jobs at that site. On Mahindra, now, they've been there for a couple of years, but they never expected to have 140 employees in that building, so they're about double what they originally started with. They've already expanded their parking lot twice, and they have filled up that building significantly. DSM, Dutch-owned engineering thermoplastic company, has added 71 jobs to their site to yield Bally's facility at Columbia Center. They started with 38 employees. They received a state incentive to expand, virtually doubling the number of employees there, because there was an Indiana facility they had with a technical center, and they moved that here to Troy as part of that facility. It's a fantastic facility, and some of you were at that opening as well. On the healthcare side, Ascension has a huge footprint here now in Troy. Up on Tower Drive, they have administrative offices, about 340 jobs. St. John Health Systems, which is a part of Ascension, over on Laverne, about 220 employees at that facility. These are all healthcare administration positions. SRG Global is a chrome-plated manufacturer that is a part of the Guardian Industries. They just moved their world headquarters to 800 Stevenson Highway, took over an empty building, and they did a fantastic job renovating that, about 260 employees at SRG Global. And on the financial side, Midland Credit opened up a facility at 320 East Big Beaver and Financial Services, about 314 jobs at Midland Credit. We have a number of economic development initiatives that support what we're trying to do here. The City Council approved early in the year a PACE energy financing program, and that led to the Heller Machine Tools completing a $1 million renovation with any energy improvements at their facility over by Crooks and Equity Drive. The Heller Machine Products project, that is the largest PACE project in the state of Michigan to date, so that program is paying off, and we're seeing a lot of interest in that program as well. We also work with the Small Business Development Center, conducting monthly startup business workshops at the Troy Public Library. We have about 15 entrepreneurs that show up on a monthly basis at those meetings. They also... SBDC is also completing CEO/peer-spectus programs here at City Hall, where they bring in CEOs from small companies to kind of talk about the issues that they have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, kind of a peer-to-peer mentoring program, which has been very successful as well. Continue to work with Oakland County, the Troy Chamber, the Troy Public Library as well, host small business development workshops, and we'll be doing more of those in 2017. You're all aware of the economic development video that we complete with the Troy Chamber of Commerce, and in addition to Troy Chamber, we work closely with the Automation Alley, Walsh College, Oakland County, and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and our Troy Business Connect program. We work with our partners to make sure that we have the resources that our companies need in order to grow, so we try to connect them to those resources, and we're very closely with those partners to make that happen. Very closely with... We were very closely with Tech 248, which is an Oakland County program that brings together all the technical companies throughout the city and throughout the county as well, and we've been active in that as well in 2017. And as many of you know, some of you participated in the Oakland County One-Stop Ready program, which we continue to participate in with the county. So what's happening in 2017? What can we look forward to? We have two projects now that are state incentive programs that are being finalized, Project Leo, a foreign-based supplier that currently is in the city, will be expanded by 145 jobs, and Project DEP, and these are not names of the real companies, but engineering software company, will be expanding about 100 employees as well here in the city. When you get this high-wage positions here in the city, that creates demand for additional support services, such as retail and hotels. We're seeing that particularly along Big Beaver, 888 West Big Beaver. We expect to see a construction beginning on Fidelity Investments, which will be the first pad that will be developed as part of that project. We'll be seeing parking structure construction as well, beginning as well, and the additional paths for restaurants around 888 West Big Beaver. A new Aloft hotel expected to go in behind PNC Tower, 126 rooms. It's only the second Aloft hotel in the state of Michigan. First one is downtown Detroit right now, and there are additional hotels on the books as well. Restaurants continue to keep coming in to the city. ADV's under construction, so Sedona Tap House, we expect an opening at Sedona Tap House sometime in January. And we also have major redevelopment projects, such as the town center project, Kmart, we expect to receive some clarity on that, we hope, in the coming year with the owners over there. We should be seeing the demolition of the Met Hotel, and then a proposal for some new redevelopment on that site. And we'll continue to see activities on the Maple Coolidge-Axtel intersection area with new senior housing and renovation of the retail center that's over there. So with that, that kind of brings you up to date on what's going on. Happy to answer any questions, but we look forward to a busy 2017, a lot of activities, and we presume the economy will hold true as well.
Thank you, Glenn. All good news. Any questions for Glenn, for Councilman Pennington?
Glenn, great job in helping to bring new business to the city. Two questions. You mentioned that absorption for the square footage. Can you explain that a little bit?
So it's, when you have empty space in an office building, it's kind of the square footage that gets occupied, that is leased out to companies or whoever the tenants are coming in. So absorption, in the brokerage community, is how they kind of measure kind of how much is being taken up during a certain period of time from a tenant.
Okay. Another question is, you mentioned Aloft hotels. Can you explain what that is?
It's another... It's a chain hotel that is a little more trendy that we're seeing pop around the country, and they tend to be a different vibe a little bit, attracting a younger audience. In some of their locations, they'll have pinball, ping pong, whatever, pool, billiards in the lobby, a nice bar setting as well. So it's a colorful, different kind of hotel, that you don't often see, too often.
Thanks, Glenn.
Any other questions for Glenn? Councilman Baker?
Just quickly, first of all, Glenn, great job, as always, and thank you for the very thorough presentation. I'm just curious if you knew vacancy rates prior to the economic downturn, where we are in comparison to, how much have we been able to get back into the city?
Yeah, I think at the height of the recession, my understanding is, we're probably around 35% in terms of the office vacancies. The industrial was north of 20%. So we're kind of looking at the five-year period, but when you go back even further, it's even higher than what it is.
I know one of the questions, we always... We've always tried to be 60% business, 40% residential on the tax, and we dropped down and it was almost the reverse. Does it look like we're getting... That's probably more of a question for Nino, probably, but I think with all this good news, maybe we're starting to reverse that trend.
Right. Although, in the office environment, the way businesses do business is changing, so you see a lot more companies, kind of the common area spaces, because they're basically householding workers, so they are on the road, they'll come in for a little bit, they don't have set offices. So that changes, you know, the needs, space needs for companies, so that'll be changing as we go forward as well. People are using, you know, are better connected today than they ever were before as well. But there's still demand for the face-to-face contact for the office uses, for companies to have an address, and that will continue to be important going in the future as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
Good news. There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy Residents and Businesses. There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. I1, our board and committee appointments. I don't have any mayoral appointments that I'm gonna move this evening, so I will call upon Mayor Protem Hoderek to make her appointments this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two appointments this evening. I'd like to resolve that the Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. For the Traffic Committee, Don Johnson for a term expiring 1/31/2018, and Sunil Sevaraman for the term expiring January 31, 2019.
Support. By Mayor Protem Hoderek and supported by Councilman Baker, that we appoint Don Johnson to the Traffic Committee for the term that expires 1/31/2018, and Sunil Severman to the Traffic Committee for the term that expires 1/31/2019. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations and thank you to Don and Sunil for volunteering to be on the very important committee, the Traffic Committee. I know Sunil's here this evening. Thanks again, Sunil. Mr. Johnson here also? I... Thank you. Thank you for serving. Next on the agenda is I2, Board and Committee nominations. I have one nomination this evening. I will move Yodong Zhu to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 1/30/2019. Support. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate Yodong Zhu to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the term that expires 1/10/30/2019. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes, and thank you to Mr. Zhu for volunteering to be on that important committee. And that concludes all of those on that committee, so looking forward to next year with that committee. I'll call upon Mayor Protem Hoderek for her nominations this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move Mark Ozarsak to be nominated to the Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust for the term expiring December 31, 2019.
Support. Moved by Mayor Protem Hoderek and supported by Councilman Henderson, that we nominate Mark Ozarsak to the Plan and Trust for the term that expires 12/31/2019. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes, and thanks again for Mark for continuing to volunteer for that important committee. I3 is a request for closed session. There are none this evening, so we will move to the Consent Agenda. Anyone on council wish to waive or pull, I should say, consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support. By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented this evening. I have just one comment on J... J4A, the Cooperative Contract Award for the Storage Area Network Replacement. We've had some discussion recently about these type of requests, that are blanket requests, and just to clarify with City Manager Kishnik, we are reviewing those blanket purchases, and we will have some sort of a presentation, my understanding is in January.
We will. A couple of meetings ago, we laid on the table the cooperatives that we utilize, and then in January, purchasing and finance will put on a presentation to go into that in more detail.
Any other discussion on the consent agenda? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. There are no memorandums and future council agenda items this evening. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy Residents and Businesses. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Council comments this evening. Councilman Pennington?
I'll go first. First, a couple of things. I want to thank Nancy Chapman again for her service over the years. You drive into other cities, and I'm not gonna mention one of our neighboring cities, but you drive into other cities and you notice signs up, and they're very, you know, it's just terrible to look at, so I just applaud her work over the years. The second thing is, and I want to wish everybody, you know, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And this time of year, you're, you know, just the compassion and the mood that everyone is in, aside from like the shopping malls, is just, that's the type of spirit that we need to carry into the new year. The... Just the animosity that has beset our country, you know, around the election, even before the election, and the hatred that's, you know, aimed towards the police department, it's not so much in Troy, but just in general. I think that, you know, we could foster a different attitude and carry this, you know, this attitude that we have around the holidays and just kind of keep it through the whole year, and kind of turn things around, and that's what, you know, that would be my wish for the new year.
So good comment. Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Just kind of building upon that a little bit, last week, we bid farewell to a resident who had served this city...
Last week, we bid farewell to a resident who had served this city quietly and gentlemanly for a long time, Mr. Choley, I always called him. And he'd say, please call me Mike. He was 95 and was active, attended the Leadership Troy Event just a couple months ago. And he was a very positive influence in his citizen involvement and just a tremendous role model. And at his visitation, in addition to some video and pictures, his family had found in his house a bulletin board, you know, like what you might have had over your desk in college, with his notes to himself that were very, there were phrases and quotes and thoughts to live by. An old boutonniere was pinned there as well, a special event he had been to. And as you read them, you realize he said these things to you as you encountered him in the community. He stood for things. He was convicted. He had opinions. But he did it with class and dignity and with the full force of information and research that he always brought forward, and a big smile on his face and words of encouragement for everyone around him. His daughter said, as she was driving around the city preparing for the funeral, she said, all I could think was the city of Troy is going to really miss my dad. And I really will. And he's just somebody I met volunteering. We'll all miss him. Even if you didn't know him, he was such a great influence. So, if we could all strive to be that way going forward, that's what makes this city, it's the Mr. Choleys of the world that make this city, the Nancys of the world that make this city so strong. And I really appreciate all those that volunteer and all of those I've encountered. And Mr. Choley reminds us to really appreciate one another in what we do. So, thank you, Ed, for setting that up.
Thank you. We'll miss Mike. He's one of the good ones, for sure. Councilwoman Abraham?
Just also wanted to remark on Mike Choley, because there was an expression he would always say to me, and usually he said it at a time when I needed to hear it the most. He would always say, life tends to move in the direction of your expectations, good or bad. And I think this has been a difficult year, not just for our city, or the county, or the state, the whole world. I think hearing golf of Councilmember Pennington and Mayor Protem Hoderek's comments, I think all of us need to set expectations for the good and move forward in a very positive way. And if we could attempt to act with the kindness, the gentleness, the compassion, and the intellect that Mike did, we would be a better community for it. Again, I only met Mike six years ago, and he has profoundly changed my life. And it was only at his visitation where I realized just how much he affected this community in such a positive way. Mike was always forward-looking, and we should be too. In fact, his daughter was telling me that he had just celebrated his 95th birthday on December 3, if I'm not mistaken. And he had a five-year plan laid out for his family. That's the kind of guy Mike was. And I think as a city, as a council, we should apply that same philosophy. Certainly, we do with the budget, three-year budget, but always looking ahead in that same spirit of gentleness, kindness, and compassion. And then also, in light of all the holidays, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year. Everyone be safe. Celebrate with your family and friends. Enjoy as much time with them as you can. We take nothing for granted these days. And looking forward to a much better and a much brighter 2017.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman McCollum?
I2, we'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. One thing I would like to comment on this morning, we had the ribbon cutting and inaugural ride of the Troy Trolley. And I was happy to attend, and it was fantastic. Job well done by city staff and administration. It was really, really well done. It was really well timed, given the holiday spirit. We stopped by the Somerset Collection and checked it out. It was a really good time and a job well done. And thanks to Smart for partnering with the city of Troy on this.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Just to echo the others, have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. And, you know, this, I was reminded twice today that, you know, although this is a joyous season and it's great to be with the family and have, build such good memories with the family, there are people out there that are depressed, and they don't have family and they don't have anywhere to turn. So, just, you know, be cognizant of that. Reach out to those that you think are suffering and in need and make their Christmases more enjoyable as well. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Should have gone before Councilman Henderson. He took some of my thunder. Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. I recognize that in the city of Troy, we celebrate a lot of different faiths. And although Christmas is on the minds of many of us, there are other holidays that are very important to a good portion of our citizens as well. But I will, just to follow up a little bit on what Councilman Henderson said, my wife's a psychotherapist and she, this is, she's busier this time of year than she is the rest of the year because there are a lot of people that hurt around the holidays. And it is important that we're mindful of them, and it's easy for us to celebrate with our parties and get-togethers, but there are a lot of people who are at home alone who are suffering immense pain. And so, I would urge anyone who can to reach out to somebody that you don't normally. If you know a neighbor, you haven't seen them in a while, check in on them. There are a lot of shut-ins in our community still, and they're not able to celebrate like we are, and they're often very alone and sad. And it's not a very joyful message for me at this moment, but it is important that we remember everybody. And I actually have another more substantive comment as well that I should have maybe led with, but as we go into the new year, I've been thinking a lot about all of the potential developments or the developments that we have coming to the city. And we had a good presentation from Glenn today about those. And we did the ribbon cutting for the shuttle service this morning. And I've talked to some others on the council and I've heard from some people in the community. And I'm wondering if it's a time to look at maybe putting together something a little more formal with regard to a PR program for the city. We have Citi Stewart Community Affairs, who does a great job promoting the city, Glenn, with Economic Development, City Manager's team, and Stephanie with the website, and other staff are doing great things. But I hear, or I'm thinking, I guess that maybe it might be time to perhaps take it to the next level, invest a little bit of money in pushing our city out there. I know you were just in New York, City Manager Kishnik, talking about the town center, but just something to think about. I know we've got our retreat in a few months, maybe something to discuss then and see if it's an option at all. But Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and thank you all.
Great. Councilman Pennington?
I just got a follow-up. You know, I heard about the trolley, you know, I was kind of excited about it, but I thought, you know, it's probably going to look a little cheesy. But I got to tell you, I was pleasantly surprised today. And congratulations to, you know, Brian and whoever department designed it and painted it. I mean, the color, it really looks great. It, I was disappointed, I didn't have time to go for a ride, but apparently you guys, you know, took a couple tours, a couple laps around the city. But it was really, really sharp. You guys did a great job on that.
I think it's those great young employees that we have that consistently think of good ideas are responsible for that. But it was a great time. You missed the chocolate at Somerset Collection. I was just hoping that when Glenn did his presentation today, he would have included the new employees that we've actually hired in the city to drive the trolley. So, we have some new employees there, too. But if I could just remind the public that this is a free service, the trolley and the shuttle are free, and this is a trial period. What happens in the next six months will determine whether we keep this going. So, we want to keep it going, so please use it. I've had several neighbors come up to me and say, we're going to Uber down to Big Beaver, hop on the trolley, and spend a couple hours on Big Beaver, going from restaurant to restaurant. So, I would encourage everyone to do that. I'm going to do that. Any other comments? Next on the agenda are reports. Any comments from council regarding the reports on the agenda this evening? Just one comment from me regarding the report on the, would be TP2C, the Senior Store Creative Endeavors Report. Council did ask for a report at the last meeting. And just to clarify, and City Manager Kishnik, if you want to jump in, at this point, Creative Endeavors is going to remain at the community center. And we have put on the shelf, at this time anyways, the Wellness Center as we look into ways of keeping the Creative Endeavors shop. Is that correct?
That's correct, as well as not shutting down the center where the pool table is and the ping pong that's used regularly as well. So, we just, we need to rethink the whole idea, and that's what we're going to do.
It's good to hear. Still continue to get some emails regarding the shop, so I think that's good news. Any other comments on the reports this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening. So, I will take the opportunity to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Have a great new year. We'll see you next year. We are adjourned.